And I think they weren't going to do that. They weren't, yeah, they weren't, they weren't pull that much stuff together. Cause, cause I followed up and asked about it and I was told he's getting legal on it. But I mean, you know, when things like this happen, it's going to resurface. And I'm not, you know, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to, again, I'm not opposed to trying to figure it out. There's got to be a way, there's got to be a way to figure it out.
Now, on millage, how often does that, how often does that go before the people? Every 10 days? Oh, so, okay. Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's good for them. Maybe their, maybe their timing is good, who knows? That's the big opinion.
Hammond City Council, uh, pub, June 9th, 2020, public hearing agenda, roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DeViterio.
Present.
Public hearing none, we'll move into our regular session, roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DeViterio.
Present.
Now for prayer, ask everyone to stand and ask Council, Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
Most precious Father of heaven and Father of earth, we just thank you right now, Father God, giving you glory and honor and praise that is due your name, dear Father. We ask you to continue to guide us, continue to keep us, continue to give us the peace that surpasses all understanding. Father God, I thank you according to your word, we said that we should seek wise counsel and lean not to our own understanding. But through all things, in heaven, as far as to get our understanding. So we just thank you for it all and everything tonight will be done decent and order and pleasingly in your sight. We ask you to continue to bless our council, continue to bless their families, continue to bless our city administration and their families, continue to bless our first responders, our police department and our fire department, continue to cover them and keep them as they continue to protect and serve our streets. Continue to bring us together, dear Father, one cannot fall without the other. If there's ever a time we need you, we need you right now. And we ask you to continue to look down upon this city right now, Father God, build us up where we're torn down, bring us together right now, dear Father, where everyone can come together, where we'll lead our city into a better place. Build it up for the next generation to come after us, and for that we thank you for it all, give you glory and honor and praise, in your darling son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Now for our pledge, I'll ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for our reports, council reports. Anyone? Yep, Steve, Sam, anything? Devon, okay, mayor.
Uh, just a huge thank you to the first responders and all of the ABCs that came in on Friday to help out the city of Hammond over and the citizens at Target. Uh, no one was hurt, which was tremendous. The suspect was brought into custody without being hurt, the police officers weren't hurt, the citizens weren't hurt. Uh, we did have a citizen that did get some glass from going through the doors with the car, but other than that, she was looked at and released. So we are truly, truly blessed, thank you, God, that we were able to get to that day and we're sitting here today, uh, in a good light in his name, so.
Thank you, mayor. Now for our minutes of May 26, 2020.
I make a motion that we approve and accept our minutes from our May 26, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Old business number one, a resolution to ratify an award bids received 520-2020 for sidewalk and drainage improvements fiscal year 2020, project number 420-12010. Chuck, we'll get you tonight, huh?
Yeah, this is a hyperlink, but I did make some other copies, so you didn't have to search through your hyperlinks for you, this is a. The bid summary, this, this is not a detailed, actually three sheets, two were very detailed, it shows every single of the 21, 26 bid items and how they fare against our aspect and against the competitors. This, if you're looking at, is just the summary of the totals of all those numbers. Can you see we have eight bids? Uh, very competitive, our budget was 970,000 and we had two or three well under that. Matter of fact, the bottom two, the, the top two bidders were just $700 apart, so very competitive, good, good prices, outstanding prices, actually. And as I've told the mayor and the administration, some of you may have heard it, uh, if we don't get too strict on completion date, we don't compress the contract time too bad, we're going to continue to get very competitive prices because contractors are hungry. But they're also short-staffed, most of them, so they can't, they can give you good prices, but not if you make them finish in a very compressed period of time. So we try to give them, be trying to be a little more lenient, this project is a nine-month project. There's an alternate on there, if you see in the second column, there's a base bid and an alternate, that alternate is the work on Cypress Street from Thomas down to the Outfall. There's a big box covered on Mary Street, way down about 1,500 feet, it's about 200 something thousand dollars. I don't recommend we award that alternate at this moment because that is going to be appropriate, or should schedule for appropriation in next year's FY '21 money. So right now, we technically don't have that money available. However, our specs read that we can award that, uh, alternate after the contract is in, uh, Cypress and Chestnut about three years ago. You may remember that work. Uh, they're a little slow, but they do high-quality stuff. One reason they're inexpensive, they have a really good crew and they're slow as the itch, they drive me up the wall, but when they walk away from a job, it's perfect. There's not a mark anywhere, they've got all the driveways right, they got the sawed down, the, the drainage worked, so, uh, I think under the circumstances, we're looking for quality work that lasts for years, we have a very competitive price. So I recommend awarding to the little bidder, Warner Trucking, Inc., for the base bid, the amount of 898,000, zero, 24, 898,024.
Do they know that after we approve our budget, that they could get this alternate?
I don't, I don't know if they know that or not, doesn't matter, my specs are very clear, they know that if we award that, if I send them a change order with that award made, they have to accept it, so it doesn't matter to me. They got plenty of work to do, you know, so they'll, they'll get to that.
Okay. Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments by the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Chuck. New business, number one, a resolution, one, accepting a 61,855 grant from the coronavirus emergency supplemental fund, funding program to offset costs associated with preventing, preparing for, and/or responding to coronavirus in Hammond, and two, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents, Charles Porcher.
Good afternoon, this is actually the application that you all approved back on May 12th. Ten days later, it was awarded.
It's the quickest grant you've ever had?
Yeah, from the time that I applied, we applied that Wednesday, the 20th, we received the award on the 22nd. In all my years writing grants, that's the quickest turnaround I've ever seen, that is unheard of. So we're asking the council to accept the award so we can go ahead and start spending that money.
And again, what is that money to be spent?
It's a combination of reimbursement for costs that were incurred by the city during, um, this pandemic, as well as, uh, a larger share going toward, um, essentially helping to future-proof ourselves if there's another epidemic or pandemic or emergency, technology improvements, that, that sort of thing.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comment? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution, one, supporting the submission of an application for reimbursement to the coronavirus relief fund for necessary expenditures incurred in preparation for mitigation of response to and/or recovery from the coronavirus pandemic between March 1st and April 30th, 2020, and two, authorizing the mayor to sign related documents, including the required federal funding certification and agreement to hold harmless and indemnify on behalf of the city of Hammond, Charles Porcher.
Uh, I apologize for length of that, that's pretty much lifted straight from this funding opportunity, this is a completely different coronavirus reimbursement-type grant. Uh, this is federal dollars that were awarded to the state, the state is in turn making available to municipalities and parishes and district attorneys and whatnot. Um, this is for reimbursement from the period March 1st through April 30th. The lion's share of our reimbursement will be, um, for payroll, overtime, um, sick leave related to coronavirus, people who are told to quarantine just in case. We're also looking at some expenditures that were made for PPE, um, hand sanitizer, that sort of thing.
Is there an amount, I mean, the last one, they told you the amount that you'd get, so we don't have an idea?
Yeah, the previous one was an allocation, that's what we were told to receive, this one, um, right now, based on the numbers I'm looking at, we're probably looking at somewhere between 40 and 60,000. I'm still tolling everything up and validating that costs were incurred within that period, they're only reimbursable if they were actually paid for during that period. So there will be costs that we incurred, but that weren't paid for until May, so that's, that's making the number a little bit skewed, but somewhere probably between 40 and 60,000, with the bulk of it being overtime related to police and fire.
Okay. Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comment by the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution, one, accepting a litter cleanup supplies grant from the cleanup supplies affiliate grant program, and two, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents, Charles.
This is related to an application that was approved by the council back in, I believe, late March, we submitted the application around early April. Um, so we're going to be receiving 96 litter grabbers, 96 pairs of knit gloves, 300 heavy-duty trash bags, 100 safety vests, 100 love-the-t shirts, these were the things that we could apply for, um, under the program, and we basically got exactly what we applied for.
Very good. Questions or comments? Pleasure of the council.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
You didn't use that, huh?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
You used that District 1.
Councilman Leon.
Tom.
Councilman Wales.
Yes, aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Number four, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 611 Magazine Street, 99% damage, located in Council District 1, the owner is Alberta White, 611B Magazine Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401, Bobby Mitchell.
Evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
The owner is here, represent the demolition for 611 Magazine, 99% damage, we recommend demolition.
You said the owner is here?
I apologize, owner's not here, owner's here for the other magazine location. My apologies.
And the owner has been informed and.
Absolutely.
All of that, all the proper.
Kip, this is your district?
Yes.
You're good? Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Wales.
Yes.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 800 Magazine Street, 74% damage, located in Council District 1, the owner is Sadie Hughes and Demetra G. Wright, care of Demetra Wright, 10089 Azalea Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403.
Uh, 800 Magazine, uh, 74% damage, uh, our recommendation is to demolish or remove the structure, the owner is here, not sure if you have any words.
What I need to.
Okay.
Do you just have to come up?
Yeah.
State your name and address.
Demetra Wright, 10089 Azalea Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401.
You understand that they want to demolish this property?
One has been removed, and he's removing another one today.
Which one has been removed already?
The one on the end, the white one.
The 810?
Yeah.
Okay.
It had, it had been removed, I passed by there today and it's gone.
Okay, so then the, the one at 800 Magazine Street, you said it's going to be moved?
Yes, he had to board it up before he can take it down the road.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one more that needs to be moved, and she's not being cooperative about it, so, you know, I don't have time to spin my wheels.
Is this on our, our list today?
It's not.
It, it should be.
It's probably, this was a backlog from during the coronavirus, we didn't do the demolitions then, and so we have some at the next meeting, which is June 23rd, which, is that on, is that?
It's not on the June 23rd, uh, then it'll be coming up in the July group.
Okay, but you're saying you want it to happen sooner?
Yes, it should have been today.
Okay.
And that's in the same area, same marriage?
Is there a reason why, if they were all around together, that?
The, the other two were, yeah, they were.
They were unannounced.
Yeah, the other two were, were very much more problematic than the 802 is, and so they were more urgent, that's why we, and, and conditionally, they were worse, the two that we're submitting. And she is the owner of the property, she has the right to an eviction of the property, so that's another process, another option for the owner to pursue, if she doesn't want.
I've done eviction, so how do you get her to move it?
To move the property?
To move the trailer.
You would have to seek an attorney, I mean, I, you have to hire an attorney for, for that. I mean, the city council can't give you recourse against getting an occupant out of your property, I mean, certainly can order demolition of the property, but there is steps and guidelines and delays that we have to take, and it appears that that's what, um, the building department has, has done, which is if it's coming to us in July.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Kip, do you have anything on this?
No, not on, on that one, we have to follow protocol till we get it.
Okay. Anyone else here, um, regarding this matter? Any questions or comments?
So are we voting for the demolition of this, or are we allowing her to move it, or what are we doing?
One of them's gone.
We, yeah.
This one, this second one.
This one is gone already, that's, I passed by that today, so that one is gone.
Yeah, so number five here, we would need to be doing a, we can, we should do a resolution so that if it doesn't get moved, there's something in place that allows them to demolish it.
Just want to be clear.
Yes, so, pleasure of the council.
Wait, councilwoman, so this is 800, this is for 800 Magazine?
Yes, ma'am, this is number five, 800 Magazine Street.
Okay.
When do you think it's going to be removed?
Well, he said the weather, uh, had stopped him and he needed to board it up, so.
So, roughly speaking, you want the council to give you how much time?
We, we have to give him 30 days, right?
30 days, yeah, we're, we're good if, if he's gonna, if he's gonna.
I think it'll be gone by the week, after talking with her, you know, about it, and the weather is what held that one being moved right now.
Right.
So we'll have our normal 30-day order, and if it's not gone within 30 days.
Then we'll be able to take it.
We'll be able to move it, okay.
Right. And what about the ditches being cleaned, I'm having problems with that, I've called, uh, and they said they didn't have any money to clean ditches, so what, what problem?
Who told you there's no money? What, who did you call?
I called, uh, five Hammond High, the one that's out there, the street department.
Okay.
And this is on Magazine?
Mm-hmm, because I got them cleaning up and I want the ditches cleaned, and they said they didn't have any money.
Okay.
I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can find a way to do it.
Make a note of that, yeah.
I got it.
You got it? All right, so I need a motion for number five, please.
I make a, uh, I make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Hold on one second, Tom.
What was the, uh, on number five, what, what do we?
We're just doing our normal order where it's 30 days.
30 days, okay, got you, moving forward, okay.
So Councilman Wales, Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
So number six is gone, so we don't need to vote on it then?
I just wanted to do a recommendation to remove it from the agenda due to the fact that it's been removed.
And you've confirmed that it's, that it is gone?
I have photographs.
I passed by there today on my way before I came up here for the 4:30 meet.
I believe what you say.
I'll make a motion to remove item six from the agenda.
Second.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
I need to ask one more question before I sit, that back street, Fleet Street, that's for the city now, because it was for the parish, because I had wanted it widened so they can have entrance from the front to the back, now I'm hearing that it's for the city.
It is inside of the city.
It's in the city. So we can't go back there and widen that street out so it could be used from the front and the back.
There's something that we could look at.
That was discussed one time, that it was going to be done, and I never heard anything.
There's something we can take a look at and see if it could be done.
Okay.
And let us know if your ditches don't get cleaned.
I sure will.
But they're, I'm sure they're at the top of the list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Number seven, right, yes, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 1204 Apple Street, 99%, located in Council District 1, the owner is Monica L. Hill, 11, 1006 East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401.
1204 Apple, a recommendation for demolition, I did speak with a, another owner as well, uh, in addition to the notified owner, that it would be torn down, the, the rear of the house has been removed, it was partially burned, so it should be taken care of prior to the, uh, 30-day timeframe.
Can I ask who you talked to?
The, uh.
The other owner?
The other owner was a Williams.
Michelle Williams?
Williams, correct, correct.
Just checking, all right, so they know about it. Anyone here on that matter? Pleasure of the council, or Kip, you're good, this is your district.
I make a motion that we move forward and approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
All right, number, number eight, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 202 East Coleman Avenue, 86, 86% damage, located in Council District 2, the owner is Corb LLC, 608 West Robert Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401.
Received a call and also an email from city attorney Andre Coudrein, uh, from the owner requesting an extension on these two locations, I know we're dealing with the, the initial one is 202, 202 and 204 owned by the same owner, to, if possible, to table to the next meeting, which is the 23rd, with the next group of council, um, demolition items due to, um, quarantining, who was able to attend the meeting.
Quarantining for this, for this meeting?
From this meeting.
Well, the next one could, is still going to be under a quarantine order, is it not?
Not really sure, I'm just passing on information, I, uh.
And, and this person reached out to the city attorney and to ask for?
Requesting for.
Do you have to re-notify with a certified letter of the next meeting?
Just as long as they're tabled here legally with the council, it'll be moved to the next available meeting.
Have you talked to the owner at all?
I have not, spoke with our city attorney.
Plans or any?
In terms of repairs or? Have no idea what the intent of the structures are, I just know that, uh, he wanted to be present to represent himself as it relates to the locations.
And if I'm not mistaken, this list was supposed to come to, before the COVID here?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so, all right, that answers my question.
We could do a, we could do, if you're not in favor of, of tabling, we could do a condemnation with the 45-day allowance, and that would, that would suffice from a timeframe to include that extension.
Does anyone here on this matter? Anyone, neighbors or anything?
I have a question, why we can't give them 30 days?
We can't?
By state order, they, they automatically have the 30 days, um, we can't proceed with any actions until the 31st day.
So we can't give them 30 more days?
Just do 60 as opposed to 45?
No, I'm talking about 30 days from the date of right now, I mean, that's, that's what we just did for her, you know, we just gave 30 days. I'm talking about this, this is an issue that, this issue just didn't come up today, we're talking about, and so, with the virus, and they done heard me say before, can't keep letting people come up talking about the virus, you know, we, all of us know about the virus in here, so, uh, Andre, I think Andre should have let us know what was going on, and for we be aware of it, so I say give them 30 days like you're giving everybody else.
So if, just to be clear, so if we vote, if we vote to, if we vote in favor of demolition, they will automatically get 30 days, is that correct?
That's correct, by state statute. Who, who district are you saying?
This is mine, I, I recognize the name of a previous demolition, so, um, I make a motion to, um, approve this resolution.
I second it.
And there was Councilman Andrews?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Number nine, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at 204 East Coleman Avenue, 72% damage, located in Council District 2, the owner is Corb LLC, 608 West Robert Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401.
For 204 East Coleman, 72% damage, uh, our recommendation is to demolish.
Did they ask for this one to be tabled as well?
Well, correct.
Okay, just so we, that's on the record, they, they requested that, all right. Anyone here on that matter? I make a motion to, um, approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 10, a resolution authorizing demolition of a property located at 311 South Linden Street, 93% damage, located in Council District 2, the owner is Thelma L. Rutterson, 311 South Linden Street, 70403.
This is also your district?
Yes.
Yeah, this is, this has been a, item has been discussed quite some time, 311 South Linden, our recommendation is to demolish, I think the owner is here to, uh, discuss other options.
Okay, the owner would come forward, please.
Um, the house on 311 Linden does not belong to Thelma Rutterson, belongs to my mother, my mother, um, started purchasing this home around 20, I'm gonna say about 19 years ago. Uh, my mother is incompetent, she's slow, she's mildly retarded, she does not think logically, and she cannot take care of her own affairs and business. We learned about this situation about a year ago, um, around December, we got an attorney involved to take care of the situation, because she was paying for the house all through that period of time, and wasn't no paper wrote, written up or anything, it was just giving the money, so they took me to the attorney and to, got there taking care of. Uh, my auntie is now, um, taking power of attorney over my mother's affairs, and we are all together, get, have all gotten together to get my mother's house fixed. We will not be able to fix it in 30 days, but the process of fixing it will start next week, we will start with the, uh, roof, repairing the roof, then, uh, put, um, cement foundation beams down or whatever, and then from there, the outside, and then complete the house. My mother will not be making any decisions on this house, it will be me and my auntie, I will be doing the legwork, she will be doing the finances and the business.
May I have your name again, please?
Quintilagore, ma'am.
Quintilatormen?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, now, I'm not the only one, we, a lot of us have received complaints on this house, it's on a prominent corner, it is definitely.
She, everybody who supposedly fixed the house for her know that she's incompetent, so basically, they was taking the money, tearing it up along with her, and nothing was getting done, and we wasn't aware because she was lying about certain stuff and different, but now that we is, we have got contractors put into place, um, along with my aunt, me, and the church ministry who volunteered to help her repair the house, restore the house.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, so, the house, who is it owned by?
It's owned by my mother now.
Okay, so it, it's titled in your mother's name?
Yes.
Right, okay, so you said she's incompetent, has she been declared incompetent, or is anyone, by a court? Right, okay. So, you said she's incompetent. Has she been declared incompetent or is anyone, by a court?
Yes, ma'am. She's been declared incompetent a long time ago.
Okay. So, obviously, this has been going on quite a long time. So, how, how has this gone on this long where people weren't knowing it was happening? I mean, there's been a hole in the roof for two years at least.
Ma'am, all I can tell you is basically I've bits and pieces here, I've been getting stories here and there. Honestly, I can't tell you.
Who's, who's taking over fixing it?
My auntie.
And where does she live?
Um, she live on eleven hundred South Magnolia.
Okay, so she's local. Uh, you have a contractor, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Have they pulled a permit?
Not just yet.
Haven't.
What is the work that has been performed over the last couple of weeks there?
Um, to be honest, nothing. From what I can see is basic.
Looks like more things have come off of the house.
And that was something she did without us even knowing about. That's why we did, got the power of attorney and stuff because she tries to do everything herself and we, it repeats the same cycle. So, now somebody else, me, my aunt, and other people are gonna take over.
She lives in the home?
No.
Okay, nobody lives in the home?
No.
Okay. We've done this before. I'll offer this as a suggestion where we give a certain amount of time to pull a building permit, because when you build a, pull, build a, excuse me, bill, get a building permit, you have to prove certain things and have your plans approved, um, and I think that's worked in the past.
It's worked. Uh, what I, what I would like to, particularly since someone has, has come forth and interested in doing a legitimate attempt to do something with the property, uh, as you said, it's been neglected for quite some time. My concern is, is whether or not the work will actually get done. So.
Yeah, I'm.
I was told a couple of weeks ago that the entire roof would be repaired, and of course, that hasn't happened. So, you, you can see our reluctance of doing anything.
Yeah, I understand.
Because of the history. So, what I would suggest is that we give the option to repair, um, give them, give them forty-five days, uh, acquire that building permit immediately, this week. Shouldn't have a problem getting that this week, and proceed with legitimate repairs on the exterior and the foundation. And at forty-five days, we revisit the location to, to determine whether or not there's been substantial amount of improvement done. If not, we can proceed with, with the demolition.
Who's, who's standard is substantial improvement?
We'll go according to the, sort of Southern Building Code to make sure that the foundation, I'll, I'll pay them a visit there to make sure we walk through and, and physically point out the necessary things that need to happen initially in order to, to satisfy the building department structurally.
I would like to see, since this is in my district and I've seen, received complaints, if we're gonna give this forty-five days, is within forty-five days that there no longer be a hole in the roof and that the foundation be up to standard for the building department at a bare minimum?
Correct.
Of that being what we're measuring substantial improvement.
Okay.
I just question, can we go with a, with a further timeline? Uh, I understand forty-five days for substantial improvement. I agree with that, but then does it just, but then does it just die at forty-five days? Do we have, do we have another benchmark that?
Can we even do that?
I don't know. I'm asking.
Well, I were, based on the, the criteria that we use for, for demolition percentages, if they structurally repair the foundation and the roof is repaired and remove all of the damaged, um, subfloor decking inside of the house, that's gonna be suitable for structural support.
It wouldn't be able to be demolished. It would be?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
So technically, they could bring it to the lowest possible standard.
Correct. And I would think, in, in my mind, I would think that if someone's gonna spend that amount of money to, to truly make the house structurally sound, then they're probably gonna proceed with the next phase as opposed to allowing the interior to just stay dormant and, and empty.
And you think in forty-five days, you can be able to get a permit, get a contract, and get that much work done?
Yes, I'm, I'm almost positive.
Okay. I'm good with that. Um, Bobby, I'd like to make sure that, uh, the house, even during this forty-five days and after, stays on the radar of the code enforcement for trash, abandoned vehicles. That's been a problem there too. So, I'm letting you know that is something that we're, that we want to see improvement, not just to the structure, but to the, to the entire property.
Yeah, at the very least, some cleanup probably could immediately be done. That doesn't cost anything. You don't need a permit for that.
Okay, I'll get on it ASAP.
Alright, so I'm gonna make a, a, a motion to?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I should have asked that. Any, any questions or comments?
So, um, she started off by saying that Thelma Rutterson is not the owner?
No, she's not.
So, you're getting ready to make a decision on something that the information is incorrect? I just wanted to bring that.
I'm sorry, I thought Thelma Rutterson is your mother.
No, Thelma Rutterson was the person who originally had the house. My mother started purchasing the house from her.
Does she have a document, transferring a deed?
This is what I was given to by my auntie. I know they, she said that they took, supposedly took care of it.
Has it been filed?
She, um, in December, the attorney took it to, was taking it before the judge to be filed.
Well, you were doing your research, Bobby. Who, who does it, who does it show the owners?
The assessor's office, which of course records and retains ownership information, they still have the owner as Ms. Thelma Rutterson.
Right.
Probably because that document has, has, has it been officially filed and, and recorded?
It's been, it's been filed. This document is not signed by the, a judge. Um, this is an active lawsuit unless there's a judgment that comes with it. Scott Sledge is the attorney.
What's the date on the?
November, November two thousand nineteen. So, yeah, we can't, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought your mother, because I asked, your mother owns the property and I was just assuming that was Thelma. I would think this is a title problem. We don't. You have an active lawsuit over who owns the property.
Sounds like a possible tabling situation. They could still proceed with their repairs.
Table it until the next meeting. I'll look into that myself to see what has happened to your title suit. I make a motion to table until our next meeting.
So, that's, it should be the next meeting in two years?
Yes, June twenty-third.
Okay. Second it.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Dieterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
One second, let me take a picture.
Motion approved to table.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Number eleven, a resolution authorizing demolition of a property located at six eleven South Olive Street, ninety-two percent damage located in Council District Two. Owner is Whitney National Bank Post Office, Fox one six two six zero, New Orleans, Louisiana, seven oh one six one.
Six eleven, uh, South Olive. We had this one before, and the reason it was removed was because of discrepancy of, of ownership. Since then, the assessor's office has confirmed that the bank has the majority of ownership with the property, so we wanted to proceed with, with demolition.
Majority of the ownership?
They're in limbo as to whether or not they want to.
Do they have a hundred percent title to the property?
The bank has, has ownership.
Okay, a hundred percent ownership?
Correct.
Okay.
But they wanted to do a foreclosure and haven't, haven't filed that paperwork. I'm, I'm assuming due to the fire, they want to expend, spend those expenses to, uh, to be responsible for the demolition because of the fire that occurred.
Who hasn't filed foreclosure? Whitney Bank?
The bank.
So, I'm sorry, that doesn't make sense because if they own it, they're not foreclosing on it. So, if, if there's a foreclosure that's supposed to happen, that means someone's owed, someone else owns it and it hasn't been paid for, and the bank wants to foreclose it and become the owner of it. So, yet again, it seems like a title thing. So, this has been removed. What has happened since it was removed?
It's, it's still the same. Still the same. We were, we were told that, that was questionable as to whether or not they were gonna do a foreclosure, and that's the reason we removed it initially from the, from the council agenda.
Has Andre looked into this one? I know we had kind of talked during a previous demolition about making sure Andre?
Correct.
Just double checks the assessor, the, I'm sorry, the, the conveyance records to make sure that all the owners are notified. And he did?
He has.
And he has confirmed that it's Whitney Bank that owns it? Do we have that in an email somewhere that says?
Yeah, we have. Anything in writing that, that we know that Whitney Bank owns this?
Yes.
Is he with this property, sir?
Yes, sir.
She has it.
I would like to speak to this property.
She's been researching as well.
Absolutely, for three years. I, I'm in, uh, frequent communication with the representative from Whitney Bank in Slidell, and, um, the property is adjacent to mine. It's a corner lot. I'm very concerned about the house being removed. I'm in, have tried on several occasions to purchase the property. I've gone to sheriff's auction, and they've come out and removed the item the day that I was there. So, I've, uh, I've, I've been persistent. I, I haven't neglected it. It's just, uh, one obstacle after another, and, and Bobby knows. He's been shoulder to shoulder with me in the effort. Uh, the reason I don't want to see the, uh, house demolished and a vacant lot adjacent to that, it looks like the same property is a vacant lot that's fifty by fifty. It has a colony of raccoons. It has five tires that I'm familiar with that have never been removed, all manner of trash and junk and cane that is over ten feet tall. That's what happens to vacant lots. And with the house there, at least someone comes and mows around it, and it is kept, if no one else, then I do. I mow the front along the streets, uh, weekly. The, I, I really do not want to see this house demolished, and I am still attempting to purchase the property if the sheriff will ever simply allow me to do so. He, the last time they, uh, argued that there was a discrepancy in the property line, well, this is a fifty-foot straight shot from my property to Olive Street. I don't know how there can be a discrepancy, but, um, they give me all manner of excuse, and I'm still trying. I would like to purchase the property, and you know what happens when I purchase property. Suddenly, it becomes, uh, a very nice place for a family to live, and this is a key property in our area on that corner of Olive and Iowa.
Is the structure principal rot, Bobby? Is the interior?
It is.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's, uh.
The kitchen burned.
Yeah, rear, rear part of the, of the structure burned. It, and of course, the smoke damage and, and been somewhat of some vandalism over the years with minor damage in it, but structurally, it could be recovered.
We frequently have vagrants living in the house, and we called, police flushed them out. Uh, it's okay for a year.
So, it seems?
So, you do not want to pay the price that Whitney's asking for? You want to wait for?
They asked me eighty-nine thousand dollars at one time, Pete. That property might be worth six thousand. I mean, it was absurd. And, uh, the, these lots in that, in that condition in that area, um, I would go up to ten thousand dollars on it because of the location, but, uh, they, I bought three right there for six thousand each. It, they're not, it's not something that is a property that's going to allow me to retire. That's a joke. I'm eighty-one years old. Uh, but, um, you know, it's not, not prized property, but my mission is to, uh, fix that neighborhood, and I almost have. This is.
So, it seems to me that the bank is the holdup in this whole situation. Is there a way to?
I don't know. I, I, I almost have a, I'm on first name basis with the man in Slidell, but, uh, he says, we can't, we still can't do anything. Sheriff still won't let us.
Well, they obviously, you said, are cutting the grass?
I think the, the city of Hammond has been hunting. No, they don't cut the grass. I either cut it or the city does.
So, we cut, the city's cutting the property that belongs to Whitney Bank?
They put it on the tax.
We, we assess it as a lien with the taxes, with the hopes of recovering that, that cost.
Not if it goes to sheriff's sale.
Sheriff's sale.
So, is, is the bank up on paying the taxes for this property?
I think they are.
The taxes are current.
So, not the lien.
Surprisingly, yeah, the taxes are current.
I think it's an automatic thing. I think, I, I don't think anybody.
So, it seems to me that the bank is getting over, because if we delimit, demolish this property on our, on our dime, the bank is still getting over.
And then it's gonna get leaned, and it's gonna go to sheriff's sale, and we're not gonna recover our money for demolishing it.
So, is there a way we?
I'm just opposed to the house being demolished. I'm still trying to buy it. If you are, can help me, I appreciate it. Uh, Whitney is willing, but when I get to the sheriff's sale, that's where I run up against, uh, the barrier. And they start arguing about things like, uh, uh, invalid description of the property, which is absurd. It's, there are two streets. There's my property that's totally surveyed, and then there's that little fifty-foot strip.
But if Whitney's paying the taxes.
They should be able to make the deal because they're the ones who pull at the tax sale.
Is Whitney paying the taxes, though? I'm seeing Karen Porter and.
Oh, that's that lady that comes around paying the taxes on everything. Yeah, that really scared me, but I got that cleared up.
So, it's got a tax sale issue.
Um, there's a lot on the clerk of court here.
So, it's got a, a, obviously a tax purchaser as well. So, has tax purchaser been notified of the, of a demolition?
That was the, that was the contact we made last year when we submitted it for demolition. Because they weren't rightfully the owners, this is why we pulled it to, uh, submit it to Whitney.
I don't think that lady's particularly interested in the property. She has, uh, what, maybe fifty, sixty?
Oh, yeah.
Properties. She just goes, she just goes down a list. She doesn't even look at the property. She's from Slidell.
So, is it up to date on taxes?
I, I can't tell you that for sure without checking our tax records, but I got on the assessor's website first, and, and Karen Porter is the name that comes up as the owner on the assessor's website, and then when you jump over to the clerk of court just to search, you see tax certificates that she's been paying, and, and that's a name I know. James Porter and Karen Porter.
Yeah.
On a lot of properties throughout Hammond.
Yeah, all, all around.
Yeah.
They don't even know.
Dr. Box is right about all that.
Is there someone else here for that? I saw a hand in the back. No? Okay, maybe not.
Yeah. We were just looking at it. It looks like Whitney foreclosed on a different property that's the same owner, um, like in Rosewood.
Yeah, he, uh, he had about, uh, ten properties when Whitney foreclosed. This was one of them. Now, they offered me all of them. Scary. I said, no, thank you.
I don't, I don't see it. I'm not trying to transfer from.
I'm not seeing any of that.
From six eleven.
On the clerk of court side.
Whitney bought, Whitney bought the foreclosed property, sure.
I think we should get a title opinion from our attorney. I mean, I want to see who owns this property.
Yeah, because we can't demolish if we don't know who the owner is.
Whitney owns that.
Whitney's the owner. Karen Porter's just a tax purchaser.
She, she just took purchases.
So, you talked, bottom line is you talked to Whitney Bank and what, what did they say when you notified?
I have, I haven't made any contact with them by phone.
I, I do regularly.
So, our code enforcement department?
Notified them by, by notice by letter. Because of the unsightly appearance of the house, it needs to go.
Okay.
Needs to be written?
So, they never responded to you, Whitney Bank?
They, they, they signed for the notice.
Okay.
Someone signed for a notice to the address that they have on file as the receiving owner. Um.
Thank you. What would be your recommendation, Bobby?
Well, I mean, given the, the issues that we seem to be having with, uh, rightful ownership, I would, I would recommend a possibly tabling this until maybe we could, maybe we'd make more contact with Whitney and maybe?
I'll call them.
Have a, a dialogue with them as to, to what they're gonna do. I, I'm agreeing with her. There's, there's no. There's, there's no property description issue at all. Those lots are in a developed, original subdivision that has automatic lot sizes of 50 by 150, so there's, there's no discrepancy on the size of the property. And her property is immediately adjacent to the east of it, so that's, that marks the property line and the city's right away is on the west. So there's no, that's, that's just a way of stalling and not being responsible.
So, let me ask you something. So if Whitney's, and I'm just asking, so if Whitney's the owner, Whitney's the owner of the property, and we tell Whitney, and they hold an order of property because they think they're going to be able to sell this house, we tell them they're going to demol, we tell Whitney they're going to, we're going to demolish the house and give them 45 days or whatever, would that maybe get them off-center to say, hey, look?
Something needs to happen.
We're going to wind up with a lot or we're going to wind up with a house that we can sell? I don't know.
I agree with that, but the problem is, is if we demolish it and have an $8,000 bill, Whitney's just going to sheriff's sale it and we're not going to get our money back.
For the property.
For having it demolished.
Because a lot is worth?
$6,000.
$6,000. Well, that's, well, that's, that's a consensus all over town. We, our demolition crews sometimes exceed the value of the property, but that's, that's really not the purpose of demolition. The purpose of demolition is to alleviate blight and to get rid of unsightly properties. I mean, so.
But that vacant lot is a mess. I mean, it's.
Well, if we have a person who wants to make the house no longer blighted.
Correct.
Then, yeah, let's not waste money.
I'm in favor, yeah, I'm in favor.
Of a demolition.
Yeah.
But maybe try and get this moving. I mean, I know you're motivated, but if we're just putting grass-cutting liens on the property all, you know, year-end, every year, like.
It's the story of our lives.
We're wasting a lot of money here.
Wow.
Okay. You want to table it or just, what is your recommendation?
Well, let's, let's go ahead and proceed with the demolition. We could always extend that time. We don't have to, it's not a law that we have to expedite bidding and demo on the 31st day. That's, that's just the time that we have that legally we can proceed, but we could.
How about we have Andre give Whitney a call and see if we can possibly get a local investor to maybe buy the 10 lots if that's what they still have, or help you get this piece of property?
Yeah, I only want the one.
Before we spend, because once we say we're going to demo it, and you give it 45 days and if we end up, nothing happens and we end up demoing, like you said, we're out.
Well, we need to, probably need a demo order to have them motivated to take a lesser price. So I say we move to approve this with 60 days, because I mean, you're not getting a sheriff's sale in 30 days. That's not possible.
Correct.
So.
When they suspend it, I would sheriff's sale.
Give them 60 days and tell Whitney that it's going to be demolished and obviously work together on not demolishing it if we're getting close to where you can get it at sheriff's sale.
I'll call Mr. Price again tomorrow.
In worst-case scenario, we out two grand.
What's his name?
Price in Slidell. I have his phone number in mind.
If it costs eight to demo and we sell it for six.
In my phone.
But she's going to buy the lot for six, she out two.
I don't know, but the sheriff's getting his commission, the fees, they're going to cut that, whatever profit that is off. That's my motion.
Oh, no, I got something to say.
Okay.
So for the last 15 minutes, we've been standing up here talking about the house and we still can't do nothing. So what sense did it make for Bobby even to bring this before us? There's nothing on you, Bobby, but I'm talking about, we're not, it don't make sense for us to keep sitting up here and listening about all these houses, all these trailers, and now here we come up, we still right back in square one. The house not being torn down, the city not paying for, we still can't find owner of the property. Seem like, I don't know, y'all office need to do a better job. I'm saying, we just lost. So I've been hearing, I've been hearing about this here project for the longest. Couldn't wait to get to District 3 and talk about it, but y'all don't hold me out on this one here.
Well, here's, here's my, here's my take on that, councilman. When you're, when you're telling someone to tear their house down, it's not like telling them to cut grass. So you have to make sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. So sometimes it takes time to make sure that we're making the right informed decision to do that. That's my take.
Okay, so, so your take, so did we make the mistake of sitting up here or did you make the mistake not having everything in order?
No, we know that.
Because what was going on, Ms. Louise, she found out through the bank who owned the house, then somebody else owned the house, so I'm talking about, now you recommend that we don't tear the house down, right?
No, I'm recommending demolition because Whitney is the owner. We just wanted to make sure that the cost that's going to be assessed is beneficial to the city. That, that's what the question was.
No, okay. Every house the city tear down, the city lose. I know, not on just this house. Every house the city tear down, the city actually lose. Every time the city go cut grass on these properties, the city lose. For every house that we tear down, the value of the property is $6,000. By the time the city get through, and when I was four years up or whatever, unless y'all run again, by the time we get through, the city owed, the city got $50,000 tied into their property. So, and I know you don't have nothing to do with that, but I'm just saying, this for every house that the city tear down, the city lose, because it's all our property and ain't nobody going to claim. So this on every house. And this is what I've been trying to solve since I've been up here, but, you know, I can't say nothing. But this the issue. And it's nothing against you.
Oh, no, I'm not taking it.
But I'm talking about just for every house that come about, that we're going to have problems. So we need to find a better solution on doing these houses, doing these trailers, because if not, we're going to keep giving people 30 days, 45 days, we're going to keep doing it over and over again.
Pretty much when they get on this list, we just going to need to have it pretty much cleared up and clarified. I guess not uncertainty on if we notify the right person or not. If it's on this list, it should be just a matter, matter or not if we're going to approve the demolition.
Correct.
Table it, so.
Mr. Wells, just to kind of maybe defend the position that we're trying to take here. This house is not one of 15 blighted properties in the area. Maybe 10 years ago it was. Now, in fact, I've personally restored most of the houses in that area. This is the last one. There is another family that's helping me and has done a very good job on restoration. So this is a very nice neighborhood. It's just this one house and the one property. There, what, I guess there's three lots altogether. A little white house with a screen and porch, cane field where the Coons live and.
Within that block?
And then this one, yeah. So it's a, it's not, it's not like an entirely blighted, blighted neighborhood that you can find in some areas. This is, this is Ms. Gonzalez's neighbor, district. She's familiar. It's a, actually, not a highly affluent neighborhood, but medium and it's family-oriented mostly. So this one is a little unusual.
Yeah, well, Ms. Louise.
Just wanted to defend it a little bit. It's not that we're really, you know, trying to.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that. On Carbin Road, the same thing, the city came to me with these houses. The houses wasn't even mine, but it was, it was on my property. So you know what I had to do? And Bobby here witnessed, them same signs that they put on all these houses, it's not getting tore down, these the same signs they put on my house. And guess what they gave me? 30 days, either tear the house down or fix the house up. So it's nothing about the neighborhood. I'm not worried about none of the neighborhood. I'd like to take all the houses out of the neighborhood or somebody go and fix them up. It'll save the city money. So I thank you for what you're doing for the neighborhood. That's it, thank you, Bobby.
If I'm not mistaken, we have a motion on the table?
We have a motion first by Councilman Gonzalez, and a second.
I'll second. We need to get off-center. This is just going to get caught in a loop that's going to go forever and ever.
So I have the first motion by Councilman Gonzalez, and a second by Councilman Leon. Get this for 60 days.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And hopefully they can work something else out in that time period.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrew.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio. Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'd like you to get with Andre to double-check the title to this, because getting word that there's actually some questions, so I'm going to take it that he said that Whitney owns it, but let's just double-check that, please.
And while he's doing that, maybe he can talk to Whitney and, you know, maybe they can work something out with Ms. Louise. I mean, that would be, that would be the ideal, but we, we got to move off-center. I mean, we'll be sitting here five years from now still talking about this.
All right, number 12. A resolution authorizing demolition of a property located at 206 George Perkins Senior Drive, 92% damage located in Council District 3. The owner is Mabel T. Nelson Estate at All, 1089 Viona Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio.
I've been in communication with this owner for the last month or so. These were properties, of course, that were initially submitted for margin. Because of the pandemic, we've extended the time. So they're in favor of the demolition. They want to do it themselves, so we're recommending demolition for this location.
They wanting to demolish?
Correct. They've, they've applied for a demolition permit as of yesterday.
Okay. So you just need to order?
Correct.
In case it falls through.
Correct.
Devon, this is your district?
Yeah, I don't have nothing to say.
You good?
Yeah.
Just making sure.
So this property owner has applied for their own demolition permit.
Correct.
To take care of this themselves.
That's correct.
So we need to give them 30 days to take care of this themselves.
But we.
I'll make a motion to approve the property owner, give him the 30 days to, for demolition on this property of 206 George Perkins Senior Drive.
Councilman Andrew.
Aye.
Councilwoman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. 13, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter, enter into contract with Keller Meyer Bergerson Services for janitorial services for all City of Hammond buildings in the amount of $158,064 annually. Janet.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We put out RFP 2104. We had a good response. We received five proposals. This Keller Meyer Bergerson Services is an established company out of New Orleans. They have great references. They met all the bid specifics, so we are asking for council's approval to proceed with the contract.
Anyone here on this matter?
They read a little bit, right?
Yes, sir.
And we had five bids. Any questions or comments from the council?
They start immediately.
They'll start July 1st.
I will also say that this is within budget of the proposed budget that is set before the council right now. That's a good thing.
Motion to approve.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrew.
Aye.
Councilwoman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrew, right?
You see that everybody, don't you?
I did.
Yeah.
Okay, motion approved.
Number 14, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter, enter into a contract with behalf of the City of Hammond with GALL LLC, the approximate amount of $50,000 annual, annually for fire and police department uniforms.
We put out RFP 2101 for the uniforms for the fire and police. We did receive two proposals. Mr. Wells, if you happen to know, we did contact the third company that usually always bids to find out what happened to their bid, because we was in communication several times with this company, and there was a miscommunication between the sales rep and the upper lady that approves, so their proposal did not get turned in. But we are asking council to proceed with the lowest proposal, which also is the current contract that we have at this time.
Janet, they purchase uniforms yearly?
Yes, sir. I checked with the police and the fire. They get, the police department gets three shirts and three pants per year unless something is ripped or whatever, if they'll replace it at that time. Fire department said that they issue out five t-shirts, three pants, one polo and one pair of shoes and other things as needed. And the same thing, you know, if it rips something, they'll issue new ones. They do turn in, like we lose officers or something, they turn in their clothes. We will try to reuse them. They wash them and issue them out unless they're damaged and we can't reuse them.
Questions or comment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrew.
Aye.
Councilwoman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Number 15, an amendment to the resolution creating the Hammond Housing Authority dated June 1, 1976, to set forth the qualifications of the commissioners of the authority. Councilman DiViterio.
I just, I just brought this amendment up to amend the current, what we have right now, just to add on the board a tenant in good standings and also a landlord on the board right now as qualification. So the amendment.
Tony, do you have a copy of it? Are you able to?
Yes.
They're all, they're in our package. Here.
Resolution amend the June 1, 1976 resolution creating the housing authority for the City of Hammond as follows. Whereas the council hereby finds and declares that it has been a longstanding matter of public policy that council confirm appointments to the housing authority for the City of Hammond and recognize that the council has confirmed appointments to the housing authority for the City of Hammond for years. Now formally resolves, if not previously resolved, that all appointments to the housing authority for the City of Hammond shall be subject to confirmation by the council. This amendment is procedural and does not make substantial change and is therefore intend to be applied retroactively. Whereas the council hereby finds, declares that it is a matter of public policy and concern and a tenant and landlord of local housing authority development are recent or other assistance from such authority shall be commissioner of the authority and serve in accordance with RS 4536 and any other applicable provisions of law. One, the tenant commissioner and the landlord commissioner each shall rescue himself from participating in a matter which would be in violation of RS 42112. And item two, the tenant commissioner shall be chosen from a list of names submitted to the appointing authority by the tenants of local housing authority development, tenants receiving assistance through the housing authority and/or members of the council. However, no person shall become or remain a tenant commissioner if delinquent in the rental or lease payments to the housing authority. Landlord, number three item, landlord commissioner shall be chosen from a list of names submitted to appointing authority by landlords, accepting vouchers or other assistance administered by the housing authority and/or members of the council. Whereas any current commissioner whose appointment has not been confirmed by the council shall be considered an open position until confirmed. The first open commissioner position shall be filled by the tenant commissioner if one is not currently serving. Once a tenant commissioner is confirmed, the next open commissioner position shall be filed with the landlord commission, filled with a landlord commissioner.
Do you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, pretty much all that's just stating to where you have proper representation on this commissioner board dealing with the housing authority in the City of Hammond. You'll have a board member that's actually a tenant in good standing. You also have a landlord who deals with housing and on the commission as well. And if there's any, any, uh, any, uh, anything that comes up on, on a matter that, that is conflicting interests with them, they have to abstain from the, from the vote.
So it's my understanding that this resolution aims to make three changes. First, to change the process of board appointments to the Hammond Housing Authority so that the city council must approve these instead of following state law where the mayor directly appoints and they begin serving. Second, to change the board composition so that a tenant participating in the program has a seat. And third, to change the board composition so that a landlord participating in the program has a seat. First off, it's odd that this resolution made it onto the agenda. On February 12, 2019, this council passed a resolution stating that the deadline for items is 4:30 on Thursday prior to the council meeting. In fact, the councilman who is proposing this resolution has routinely chided city staff for submitting items at the last minute, even though they were submitted by the Thursday deadline. And now we sit with an item that was submitted yesterday, several days after the deadline. The language of the resolution is also confusing for two reasons. First, the resolution states that this amendment is procedural, that it doesn't make a substantive change, and that it should be applied retroactively. It's clearly not procedural if you're proposing both to change who is involved in the process of appointments and the board composition itself. Second, the language that it should be applied retroactively is also confusing. Does it essentially disband all prior boards of the housing authority if those members were not confirmed by the city council? Could that jeopardize past board decisions regarding funding or policies that had been approved by such members? But the heart of this resolution, its real aim, goes against state and federal law because placing a landlord on the housing authority board establishes a clear conflict of interest. The reason behind this is that a landlord typically owns multiple properties that participate in the program and is therefore considered a contractor, receiving financial benefit from the agency. According to two people who have years of experience in administering housing authorities in their programs, a landlord can't serve on the board. Bobby Collins is the current president of the Louisiana Housing Council and teaches commissioner fundamentals and ethics for housing authority boards. He's never heard of a housing authority board with a landlord and said this would be a conflict of interest. Perhaps there's one that the councilman could offer as an example. Cheryl Williams is the director of the HUD New Orleans Field Office. Her office is responsible for overseeing the public housing contracts for Louisiana and the HUD rental programs. She believes that a landlord serving on a housing authority board is absolutely a conflict of interest with both state and federal law, and that the Hammond Housing Authority would potentially lose federal funding if they had a landlord as commissioner. She also reiterated that the state law provides that the mayor makes appointments to the board, which happens in many municipalities across the state. They do not have to be confirmed by city councils, which is the same position that was initially stated by our city attorney. I had originally spoken to a few of the council members to ask that this item be tabled, which could still be your decision. But based on these reasons, I urged the council to vote against this resolution in its entirety.
And then item one was stated, the tenant commissioner and the landlord commissioner each shall rescue himself from participating in a matter which would be in violation. And then also
That doesn't address the federal law.
Then made notes, real quick, can you let me finish, please?
Sure.
I respected your time, so just respect mine. I checked with the legislator that removed it, and it was not because of a kind of ethical issue, but rather a mayor that opposed it. New Orleans is also still required to have a landlord commissioner by state statute. Shreveport requires commission, confirmation by the council. There is nothing that prohibits a city from adopting ordinances that do not conflict with state statute. The limits and burdens placed in the state statute are usually the result of people with interests that cannot get them through the local levels for various reasons going around them. We have long been confirming board members, and supposedly nobody can find a formal resolution requiring that practice is, it clearly has been adopted as a practice. The state requires a tenant commissioner and has a time required a landlord commissioner for everyone. We have no idea of knowing exactly how many municipalities require landlord commissioner, but it is, it has been required statewide at times and still is in some places. I think it all, and I think it is always good to have people that are involved in the process, involved oversight of the body. So I think making it clear, we want a tenant and landlord representative on the commission, and that we want oversight to confirm them in good, everyone.
To be clear, those other boards, you stated New Orleans has a landlord commissioner? New Orleans has a current landlord commissioner on their housing authority? That's a landlord who participates in the choice voucher program?
Uh, yes.
Or is it just a landlord of owning property?
That was the whole, if you read it, that was the whole point, yes.
I understand what the language is here.
Yes, and that's what he was doing as well, too, yes. That's why it's here, and that's why I have my facts right here, yep. So that's, that's that, yeah.
That seems different than what the New Orleans HUD office believes is happening throughout the state. So it seems like there are matters to be researched for this, and again, since this was brought yesterday, there hasn't been enough time to fully consider everything at hand.
I sent it, actually, and clarify that, I sent it in, um, I gave Carly, when did I send an email stating I was working resolution? Was it, wasn't it last week?
Thursday, you sent the agenda.
I just wanted to make sure that I was working on that, yeah. And then I emailed Andre, I think he was out of town, I think, so, yeah.
I think the agenda preparation is clear, though. It says all items submitted for inclusion on the agenda shall be presented to the council clerk no later than 4:30 on Thursday before the council member, before the council meeting. All proposed ordinances, resolutions, or correspondence for the council's consideration must be presented to the clerk by the agenda cutoff time.
And we could also amend things in the council meeting as well, too, during the meeting.
Did you wanna amend that tonight?
I'm just saying, we can also do that, yeah.
You wanted to amend the agenda for how you present the agenda and how the items are submitted?
We can do that if we'd like to, the council members have that right to, yeah.
Okay, I think it's a vote of the council to amend the agenda. It has to be a unanimous vote to amend the agenda.
Well, put this on the agenda, so, I mean, that's, that's, that was my resolution. Uh, more than welcome to hear anything else, any other council members up here have to say about it.
Let me ask if there's anyone else in the audience that wants to, to speak to this.
Tracey Wells, 610 Moonee Avenue. Um, I read over the resolution, and I actually think it's a good idea that you have representation from people who participate in programs. It is my understanding that the mayor typically, you know, typically appoints persons to the various boards. It would behoove the council to look at all boards and commissions, to see if you have true representation of the people who benefit from the service. I'm neither a tenant nor a landlord that participates in housing vouchers, but if I was, it would be good to have someone who represents the tenant and/or the landlord to have input into the policies and the procedures that govern this board. So I actually think it's a good item to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This, this didn't, uh, I mean, I, I just, I just saw this. It sounds like to me there's, um, a little more research that we might need. I know personally, I need a lot more, I need a lot more information. We haven't, unless I missed something, I don't think anyone from the housing authority is here tonight, uh, you know.
And we didn't even have our city attorney to be able to look at it.
I just think there's a lot of information, for me, there's a lot of information missing at this point in time.
Anyone from the public?
And I'll just say, too, that I think the, um, tenant commissioner is a great idea, and that's outlined in state law. So there's no changes or opposition to that. The question is about the landlord.
Frank, Frank, excuse me, Frank DiViterio, I would like to point out one thing. I think there was a statement, just to be clear, that the process, the status quo has been the council approving appointments to this board. So that's not a change. I mean, I've seen, I've been here, and it's come before this council before. So there, the, the idea that this, that is a change to what has been the practice, I think, is incorrect. I think the practice to this point has been that those nominations come to the council for approval, from what I've seen of them.
I would say, considering that this hasn't been approved by the city, excuse me, a city attorney, that I would feel more comfortable if he had a chance to look at the language of the resolution in light of issues brought up, just to confirm it before we pass law that could be contrary to law. That's my thought. Anybody else? Yep, Devon, you have anything?
Not at this time. So, uh, basically making the motion to table this until Andre has a chance to
I think that's a good idea.
To look at it.
Yeah.
And this will be put back upon the next, uh, council agenda, uh, next meeting.
Yeah, we could do that, uh, as, as long as Andre has time to review it and give us an opinion before then.
Yeah, if we just, if we just go, if we just table it, then we can decide what, when to bring it back to the, when to bring it back, so that we have all the information. I wouldn't put a deadline on it, because we don't know when Andre's gonna be back. I don't think this is an emergency item, um, but I mean, you know, if it takes two council meetings to get it done, I just wanna make sure we got all, all the facts, all the information, and that we're not doing something that's contrary to state law or contrary to some other law. And I, and I, I personally wanna talk to some people from the housing authority, too, to get their input. So whether it's, you know, next week or week after, or, you know, next meeting or, or the following meeting. So are you, are you motioning to table it?
I think, Devon.
I'm sorry?
Normally, when we table something, and from what I've been seeing since I've been up here, next council meeting, it'd be on there. You know, so we sit here and talk about waiting and waiting, you know, it might take two years. So I prefer, uh, myself, the next time we meet, just have it on here.
That's fine.
And if we don't have the information, we have the opportunity to table it again, so that's not a bad idea.
We gonna keep tabling it. I will go ahead and make a, make a motion at this time that we table this, uh, this amendment until the city attorney has a chance to, to review it.
Read the second.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Motion tabled.
Sixteen, a resolution to reappoint Matt Sandifer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term from June 15, 2020 to June 14, 2024. Mayor.
Matt Sandifer is here. He currently serves on the board. He lives on West Charles Street. He's a contractor, builds homes locally. Matt, if you wanna come up, please? I'm asking for the council to approve his appointment.
Matt Sandifer, 408 West Charles Street.
Appreciate you coming to meeting.
It's no problem.
Sitting through the long meeting, thank you.
Yeah, Lacey had mentioned trying to get me, uh, trying to get me up early, and that didn't happen, so. But, uh, other than that, yeah.
You're currently sitting on the board, right?
Yes, sir.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments? Pleasure the council.
Motion approved. Motion approved.
Who was it first?
Steve is the first.
I'm the second.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you for serving, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Final adoption of ordinance, uh, none. Introduction of an ordinance, one, an introduction of an ordinance for expanded conditional use request by Ramona Holland applicant to allow placement of a manufactured home meeting all code requirements located at Lot 13 and 14 Square 8, Greenville Park, subdivision at 120 West Newman Street, Zoned RS3, recommended with the commission, recommended with conditions by the zoning commission.
Good afternoon, council. Um, we're asking to introduce this at the next meeting for a public hearing. Uh, Ms. Ramona hasn't actually purchased the property yet. Um, she's anticipating to buy it after getting an approval to place a mobile home at this location. Uh, the zoning commission recommended approval, and they added the standard conditions for the mobile homes.
Pleasure the council.
Make a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Motion approved to introduce June 3.
Number two, number two, an introduction of an ordinance to rezone Lot 6, Block 78, higher survey request by Best Team in Town LLC from RM2 to MXC in accordance with survey by Brett J. Martin dated 3/9/2020. Recommended approval by the zoning commission.
So I, I saw a, um, a mistake on here, not mistake, but we left off the physical address. We rezoned by legal description, uh, but I'd like to add the address of 304 South Oak Street.
304?
South Oak Street.
South Oak Street.
So we're asking for, um, an introduction for public hearing for the next council meeting. Uh, this meets our zoning, um, recommendation by the zoning commission to rezone this property. It's almost directly across from the fire station. We've rezoned several pieces right there. Um, our master plan and future land use map supports this rezoning, so we ask to introduce at the next, uh, public hearing at the next meeting.
So I'm gonna make the motion to, um, introduce this, this, um, item, including the 304 South Oak Street.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Read the second.
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Public hearing set for June 23.
Number three, introduction, introduction to amend ordinance 16-54801 to allow change in occupancy ownership from Joseph Rabondo III to Timothy S. Schoeff for an existing microbrew pub located at parcel, on parcel tubing 1110 CM Fagan Drive, Zoned CH, recommended approval by the zoning commission.
So this is an existing, um, microbrew pub that was approved back in 2016 with some conditions. You have a copy of that previous ordinance. Uh, they're just asking to change ownership. They're looking to sell this business and give Mr. Timothy the right to purchase this, and it's actually recorded at the courthouse, it was picked up through the title work. So he hasn't physically purchased it yet, uh, until this ordinance is changed to give him permission.
Pleasure the council.
Motion introduce?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.